On the agenda, we will be respectful of everyone's time. Council members will not engage in dialogue. Individual members of the audience and no media action or public comment will be addressed to. Okay, I guess Mayor Clark, the first person who is speaking for public comment.
First is President Ryan, so you go up by your own right.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan?
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Ryan Silkowsky, on behalf of Harvey's Social Society, I'll try to be fast. It's a quick Harvey update and some big important questions. As far as the city budget, do we know yet how our tax money is being spent? You can interact. That's a no. Has our elected treasurer been given access to the city's books yet? No. We're just wondering what is being hidden here? Like, why can't we see where the money is going? Uh, let me see. For transparency, were all of them, Chapman and Key removed from committees because they dared to ask questions about public money? Did we find out that city officials were charging city expenses using Comptroller Williams' personal credit card? Was the finance committee meeting ended early because residents wanted to ask questions that mattered? As far as the agenda items, why are you voting on anything without releasing a full information packet online like other towns? We don't even know what you're voting on. An agenda item doesn't explain anything. We want you to explain the items and take questions on the record, in public, before your vote. Not in your private office, not via phone conversation or an email. Regarding the metro station, for $70 million, do we want Mayor Clark's cheap looking spaceship design for the regional transit hub in downtown Harvey? Why can't we get a nice station design like Hazelcrest or Timney Park or Oaklawn? Do residents know that the mayor wants to close off Park Avenue and your 154th, so traffic has to drive around on Broadway then back to Park Avenue to go either north or south? Is that what residents want? You want that? Maybe you do. Do you know that Metro has designs that don't close off Park Avenue? And the mayor purposely hid them from you so he could choose what he wanted for our city instead of asking the people? So I urge everyone to vote no on the metro station agreement tonight. You need to slow down, go back and ask taxpayers what they want for this transit hub in downtown Harvey. Stop forcing things through without taking feedback. As far as the Myrtle Avenue homes, have we gone back to the residents to ask what they want for flood relief? The council needs to scrap that whole plan and go back to square one to use plans that don't kick out widows and veterans and destroy priceless historic buildings. For Ascension, is it true that even after repeating 911 calls, the city purposely leaves unsecured this historic church? And this is right by my house, so you know what I worry about at night. Is it true that people are seen going in and out at all hours doing what knows what? And the city does nothing to secure property that we, the taxpayers, own? It's almost like the city wants the church buildings to burn down, just like those two fires the other day. As far as the Broadway buildings, why has the council not tried to sell and reuse those buildings right across the street? We brought an investor and we studied with the mayor, said no. We had a mysterious fire in one of the buildings last summer. What's the plan for downtown Harvey? Are we just gonna flatten all the buildings and make it look like a war zone? So politicians can continue to loot our history and our wealth? As far as the agenda items tonight, this ragging happening. Who owns it? Why is the lease being changed? Why this sudden concern about the hotel rooms in Harvey? What did you do in the last meeting for fire hydrants? And then the last one is, please vote no on that station that looks like a five-year-old bomb with a sheet of paper. Thank you.
You go, Eric. Wood and Keanu Belt. We're here not in reference to Dalton. We have our issue, but it goes everyone else. But we're here regarding the township, which is the ten campuses, seventeen municipalities, including yours. We don't feel that the township is being run to our best interest. We're hoping that you possibly will agree and join with us as my group and I are planning to put together a rally to voice our opinions and collectively, their power and numbers collectively be heard and hopefully something be done. There will be more to come as to the day time and old patients, but I am asking the residents of Harvey to join us. And let's take our township back. Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Next is Jim Garrett, followed by A.C. Chandler.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Jim Garrett. I'm president and CEO of the Chicago Southern Convention and Visitors Bureau. Up until about four years ago, we had a very strong partnership with the village of Harvey. Unfortunately, that has stopped. I sent a letter to Mayor Clark back in January. We also sent the same letter a year ago, which he refused to sign. It's a very simple letter. It's called an Agency of Record Letter. It gives the village of the city tremendous assets from a state farm availability grants. I'd like to read this letter that I sent with your permission. Dear Mayor Clark, By simply signing the Agency of Record Letter, the city party of Harvey could qualify for grants, including the Cook County Tourist Alive Grant Program, 2.3 million dollars, and the Illinois Department of Commerce, Economy, and Housing Program in the amount of $625,000. All of the Chicago Southern, we have sixty municipalities that we work with, with official destination marketing and management agency for the entire region. Our job is to work into the area, conventions, trade shows, sporting events, working with also our communities to help upgrade hotels. By simply, by not signing the state agency letter last year, as we requested, the city party was ineligible to receive the benefits of these grants. A simple signature. I want to emphasize again, there's no financial or legal obligation associated with the state of Illinois, Chicago Southern Visitors Bureau, or Cook County by signing the Agency of Record Letter. If you have any questions, let me know. I've made numerous attempts to meet with the mayor. I've made numerous calls to set a schedule. All have been totally ignored. I can talk to the governor's office. Within two or three days, I get a response from someone from his office. Nothing on this community. We're here trying to say, we're trying to help you here. Any trustee can sign this. It's a simple signature pinned on paper. I'd like to have it signed, maybe tonight. I can go out, maybe you qualify, you would qualify for potentially some of these grants. It's real simple. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening to all of the residents. Very special thanks to Mayor Clark, trustees and staff of the C.R. Harvey. And I would like to thank everyone for being here today. And for Black History Month, I'd like to say thank you to everyone being here. And my name is A.C. Chandler, former member of Last Call Ministries and also a former member of the C.R. Harvey. For Black History Month, I'd like to bring to everyone's attention to Mayor Clark and the trustees and staff to bring to acknowledgement of Last Call Ministries that helped out a lot of people that were drug, alcohol, as well as substance abuse, as well as just homelessness and getting their lives back on track and getting them on the right direction and become a productive member of society, including myself. I would like to bring to everyone's attention throughout Black History Month to let everybody know what Last Call Ministries meant to the C.R. Harvey, to the staff and trustees, to myself personally by me being a former member. And I would like to briefly have a quick saying that was called "Rise Through the Ashes of Success." If you were to come to me when I was 16 years old and came to me and said that you will be going to be successful within the next 25 years from now, I would look at you and say, yeah, right. Let me graduate to high school and see where it goes from there. My humble beginnings started out at Last Call Ministries when I was 16 years old. Ended up being homeless. Last Call Ministries made sure that I enrolled back into high school, where I took the Thorpe Township High School and graduated in 2000. I was there when our main center came into fire and completely burned all the way to the ground. Even though our main center caught on fire and completely burnt to ashes, that didn't stop me or deter me to go forward when I graduated from high school, as well as getting my barber's license and ended up working with one of the best barber shops in the world in Hyde Park, which where President Barack Obama used to come and get his haircut at. I was there when the ministry ended up catching on fire and making sure that myself and the residents got encouraged to go forward our lives and become successful in our lives. Moving forward, if it wasn't for me achieving my dreams, I wanted to meet President Barack Obama in person and to become a success for the residents of Harvey and the city of Chicago. Hopefully, by briefly bringing this into life during Black History Month, I want to let everyone know whatever decision is meant to Mayor Clark, to trustees and staff to come with the best decision that Last Call Ministries still serves a wonderful purpose in the C.R. Harvey. Thank you and I'm grateful.
We have Patricia Tillman, followed by Eric Franklin.
Hi, my name is Patricia Tillman. I would like to thank the city council and everyone that's here tonight. And especially Ryan Cummings, Minister Ryan Cummings. I too was a member of Last Call Ministry. Thirty-seven years ago, I remember when I was an alcoholic, a drug addict, and Last Call Ministry helped me to get back on the right track. I want to thank you all for acknowledging that the building on Center, 154th and Center, is that it belongs to Last Call Ministry. I want to thank the city council and the members of this council for acknowledging that it belongs to Last Call Ministry and giving it back to them so that he can do some great work in the city of Harvey. Twenty years ago, I wouldn't think that I would have my own business. I have a son that played pro baseball on his way to the major leagues. He's played for the Chicago Dogs and now he's got another contract that he's about to sign, you know? I wouldn't believe that I would own my own construction company in the city of Chicago. Land MJMJ Construction, licensed and bonded in the city of Chicago. I'm grateful that y'all have given this building so that you can do some great work and encourage other people to become entrepreneurs, small business owners, help women to get their money back on track to raise their children. There's so many things that can become of that building. I hope that you all also give funds and grants and things to help assist with the gutting and rebuilding of that property. There's mold in there and the need of total renovation, you know? There are so many activities and things that can be done in that building as far as helping mothers to raise their children. Just getting children activities, after-school programs to keep them out the street. Entrepreneurship programs, just so much. I'd just like to thank Pastor Ryan for helping me, you know? You've helped me become the lady that I am today. And that's it.
Perry Franklin, you got a call?
Yes. Perry Franklin.
Followed by Ms. Zerker.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity to see the party of Mayor, the city council, the residents of Harvey. My name is Perry Franklin. I am a student and entrepreneur of Ronald Cummings, pastor of Ronald Cummings. I first met Pastor Cummings when I was 14 years old. He gave me the opportunity to be a part of his salon, the first black-owned salon business in downtown Harvey, 1979, 1980. I'm the person that I am. I came about and I wanted to get my hair done. But my main purpose was to come in and get a job. So by me being the person that I am, I asked him, did he have anybody to sweep up the floor or take out the garbage? He looked at me and said, Sally, young blood, I'm gonna give you an opportunity. What an opportunity it was. I began sweeping floors, picking up the garbage. Next thing I know, I was shampooing hair, cutting hair, blow-drying hair. And at that time, it was not common for a young black man to be doing hair. It was an opportunity that gave me the encouragement to go on to beauty school. It gave me all the keys that I needed at that time. Long story short, three minutes. This young man gave me my life and he's done it for so many people, so many individuals just like me. And to give him the opportunity to get his building back and to give the youth and the young people of Harvey another opportunity and a chance to come and be someone in life is a great opportunity for him. This is what he wants to do. This is what he always talked about as I was coming up.
Thirty seconds.
And for Harvey to give him this building back was a blessing from God. And I thank you all for this opportunity. I thank you all for giving him another chance to be what he wants to be in life. God bless everyone and have a good evening.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ms. Zerker. I'm a former trustee in the Harvey Public Lab here from 2015 to 2021. There's a couple of things I need to inform the city about. Number one, fire-prone construction. Harvey lost five floors of all wood. No steel, vertical, horizontal framing, no concrete. If the building ever cuts on fire, it's a matchbox, killing. I don't know who was on the planning and zoning board when you all decided to do the project, but this is being done the cheapest, and I mean the cheapest way that it possibly could be done to raise the profit margins on whoever is doing this construction. The only thing that's gonna save that building is a water sprinkler system. If it ever fails, you're gonna have a lot of dead bodies in there, a lot of people hurt. So it might be something you want to think about when you're in the planning and zoning meetings and you're discussing stuff. Nobody discussed the actual construction materials and what it was gonna be made out of. You know, maybe you need to let the people know when they move in that it's all wood construction and what could happen and they're moving in under their own liability and the city won't take responsibility for that. Number two, the treasurer's report. As I, once again, it's not on the agenda. I don't see anything on here. This is the second Monday in the month. Let me share something with you. Is it a possibility that the reason why you guys don't want to give a treasurer report is because then it's a matter of record how much money you said that we have and then all the people that are going after the city that we own will then come after you with new, fresh lawsuits? Is that what it is? That's a good question because there's something behind it and I'm pretty sure that that's part of it. Third thing, executive session, the way the city council is being ran. Executive session is for the retention or the removal or the discussion of lawsuits pending, amounts, things of that nature. We're not discussing anything like that in the city council meeting, but the aldermen who ask a simple question are badger, shut up, held back. And all the people that are doing this is in the city of Harvey. Go to Homewood, go to South Hop, go to Evanston, they don't do this. The next time I come to this podium, I'm gonna break one of their chairs and read it to you.
Thirty seconds?
The thing that happened at the last meeting with Tracy Keys, where he wasn't given an opportunity to talk, that's not good. That looks bad. It's like the city is being ran like it's some type of gang, a Russian gang. That's not good and it's not necessary. The questions that he asked may be something that the people in the audience want to know too. And this is the place to do it because talking with an alderman off the record is not clear because all the time you don't get all the information, all the truth when you do it here, it's for the record.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for mentioning your opinion and your thoughts. And next is the alderman comment. Now, I would like to do, I'm sorry, go ahead. And I would like to discuss among the aldermen, how many minutes that you want to give so we can proceed forward. The standard is two, three minutes? Is there a second?
Next.
Okay. Alder Baker, say aye. Nay, Alder. Against, say nay. Okay, ayes have it. Each alderman will have three minutes to speak. And just as a reminder, you may not wave it to another person, a person in the audience, just as the courtesy. Anyone would like to go first?
Sure.
Okay. Alder Mc. Chapman? Alder Wood?
Sorry. Thank you. Great to sit forward in the city of Harvey. Please pardon my absence at last. Two weeks ago at our meeting, I had a fire work committee I needed to complete. The two things I want to share, one is our telephone number is 708-320-9214 and it's 708-320-9214. If you have any questions, concerns, complaints or compliments, please feel free to give us a call. The Second Ward office is located at 15446 South Lexington. And each Wednesday, we host office hours from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. However, at 708-320-9214, at your leisure, feel free to reach out if you have a concern or you need to set a personal time sign for us to meet. Also, this month, we have three upcoming events, one of which is on Saturday, March 9th, a collaborative effort with the Ford Ford Office and Tracy Key, as well as our city treasurer, Ayesha Pickett. It'll be here at Harvey City Hall. Again, that is Saturday, March 9th. It's gonna be from 11:30 a.m. to 2:05 p.m. Also, this month, on Thursday, March 21st, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. At Transformation United Methodist Church, also where the Second Ward office is located, 15446 South Lexington, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00. Family Christian Health is here for COVID and flu vaccinations. And then following from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., on behalf of the Better Government Association, thank you to both Ms. Lynnish and Ms. Watson and Ryan Silkowsky for setting up the Better Government Association to host a foyer training. Again, that's all on Thursday, March 21st. I would like to share this, as we close out Black History Month, let us forever be reminded of the call to action of the many heroes and heroes that fought courageously to ensure black people were afforded equitable access. Thoughts of heroism, leadership and compassion come to mind when I imagine the plight of Harvey's own third ward alderwoman Gloria Taylor, the first black woman elected to the city of Harvey in 1977. Alder Taylor served and still serves as a symbol of hope and no last feeling for our community. It's our duty as legislators to ensure we use our platform to voice the concerns of residents. Residents, you've asked a variety of questions regarding the economic development and financial scape of the city. Previously, I served in both committees, one as chair and the other as co-chair. As of Monday, February 16th, pardon? Okay. February 16th, I served in neither committees, mayor, alderperson, attorney administration. My main question is why? Why isn't an intent to be involved in the process of legislation and to serve to the best of my ability being Muslim by no call for point of information on the council floor on the email stand removal front committees may score it out and vague as when asking questions that are packet related? I am hopeful that the conviction of compassion reverberates for each of you. Thank you.
Anybody here should go next? Okay. Alder Mc.
Well, thank you and good evening to everybody. I want to thank everybody for coming on out. I would like to take it back a little bit on Aldous Chapman's information about the joint board meeting. I think it's great when different boards, you know, get together, come to get together because we're all staring at the same common problem. So just showing us to get together is just a start. And every alderman is fighting, every resident from every ward is just fighting, not just the second ward or the fourth ward. Anybody is welcome, come. We're gonna have some good information that we're gonna pass on to the residents, things that you don't normally get in the meeting. We're gonna have a free raffle and a live performance from Janet Jackson. Just kidding. Just trying to reach y'all out there. I just really, just want to know that people know that I'm just here to stand up for my city and if standing up for my city is wrong, then I don't yell at anybody. So that being said, I would like to, I gave you the information on that. I just want for Black History Month, I just want everybody, which I mentioned this a few years back in the council meeting, but if you can look at that very picture in back of yourself, if everybody can look and if you can go around that whole wall, all the way up to the second row is when you first saw the first black bears in the city of Harvey, which is only happening in such a time. But this is just to let you know that how long we have come because it was at one point, we couldn't even be up there. If you said anything wrong, you'd be hanging from that flagpole. And I'm just keeping it real. So now that we're here, why don't we?
All right. We gotta be respectful.
It's okay, but I just wanted to say, I had a vacation, you know, guy I work with and he said that, a man that I really respected. And he said, Tracy, I'm gonna tell you about, you know, tell you the truth, but I hope you don't take it wrong. But he said that a part of Afro Americas is that they don't know how to govern themselves. And you know what? I didn't get mad at him. I didn't get disappointed, but I just know when we get certain positions and certain levels of power, we change. And sometimes you have to change when you get a new position. You have to change. But I'm saying, well, it's a wrong belief and we became so far and opportunities that I have, you know, that we have just so we can work together just how much we can have. And I just want to be a part of that. Thank you.
First of all, thank everyone who came on tonight. I always like to see the residents out there. I think that's the first step toward being aware of what's happening in our cities and continuing to drive our city forward. You can't do that without me. With that being said, I always want to use this time to go over and say this to you all. The Legislative Committee meets every second and Tuesday at 5:30 p.m. Unlike this crowd tonight, there's zero people getting along, zero. If you don't know, what we do is we also work on current legislation, maybe it's already existed, but needs some, maybe something additional or some things taken out of it. Just trying to, just to give you an example, and this really comes from residents. When a resident, we kept getting all these home calls about spray dollars and lighting dollars. All those things that was going on, kids couldn't go to school and looking at the current legislation, like, dang, dang. But this was just wonderful work. And it was mad. Said, you may be impacted by all the damage and we challenge you to share the impact. Take away the discretion, just to give you an example of some of the things that we do. But also, for those who want to be a part of the process and want to know a little bit more in depth about it, we really go through those processes. Really, some of the things that you see on the agenda have been in the committee, some of them have not. There's other committees everywhere, but coming out to that meeting, you really get a full breakdown of what you may see in the future. you really get a full breakdown of what you may see in the future on a, on a, uh, on a council night. So I really want to encourage you all, come out, make sure you're communicating with your alderperson, because again, what we wanna do is create performances and things that represent what you wanna see. And so, when a resident is calling, he says, well, you know, I don't know if this is going on. I need to know what can we do as legislators? I'm not a cop, I'm not a fireman, uh, I'm not a lawman, I'm not that, I'm your legislator. So I need to think from a legislative standpoint, how can I help fix this issue?
Thirty seconds.
Uh, Black History, look, I love all of our black people. Everybody that did anything to help move Black people into America, I really try to focus not on the past, but look at what the history that we're writing today. Like, make it have impact. That's why I ran for office in the beginning, is to make a change, to more fully have an impact on this city, uh, and, and particularly you, I'm very concerned about you. And so, I wanna thank you all for the continued support. Once again, I will see you on Tuesday, 5:30 p.m. Bring your questions, bring your suggestions, help us help you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, well, let's say, and, uh, first of all, hello, everybody. My name is Alderman Chapman O'Malley, and I represent the Great Six Ward. I'd like to start out by giving out my phone number again, it's area code seven zero eight five one six two two seven six. Now, it's not just a phone number, it's an actual, an actual answer every single call. You will never, ever give a voicemail. If you do, I promise you. One of the things that I like to really commend on is we all see the ceaseless gun violence in our cities and in neighboring communities around us. And I'd like to commend our Harvey Police Department for acting in such an expeditious way when they're called in regards to gun shooting. Recently, there was a gun shooting and a murder of Popeye's Chicken in my ward, 147. And the Harvey Police Department, along with other municipalities, in support of Harvey's Department, they all came out and they all were able to, uh, rectify the situation and bring it down to a calmness where the residents of the Sixth Ward and the residents of the city just passing through were, uh, were feeling comfortable coming through our communities. I'd like to commend our police department, our head group, okay?
All right.
I, I also want to commend our Streets of Salutation Department. That's another, another phenomenal group of people that come out. And I've had so many instances in my ward where I ride every day, and I ride around and down the alleys, and I see fire dumping. And, and when I called the Streets of Salutation Department, they had expeditiously, and they come out, and they took up tires and couches and mattresses and all these type of things, just to make our community a lot more viable as far as living. There's a car washing, 146, and I don't know, somebody just opened a garbage and just had garbage sprawl all over this car washing. And I made that call, and less than two hours later, it was cleaned up. And what I'm making is that these are entry points into our city. You know, we all take pride, we all, as African-American, we all take pride in our community. And I'm pretty sure everybody here has a vested interest. That's the reason why you sit here in this city council meeting tonight. The people that, that may not be able to get out, they're not here. But when I look at you all, I look at people that care about this community, and I think you all should be commended. On another note now, uh, we're coming, we're closing out, uh, Black History Month, and I agree along with my colleague, Alderman Chapman and Officer Magdell, that we have a heavy load on our shoulders due to the people that have came and fought and sweated so that we can have the rights that we have here right now. I wanna be very brief, I think my time is almost up. But I'm having a first town hall meeting. And the date is tented March 9th, the Marxists take at the First Gospel Church, and that's located at 145th and Green Avenue. Bishop Owens is there, Ernest Owens is the minister over there. And he's allowing me to come in. We're gonna prepare breakfast, bacon, eggs, sausage, and a real breakfast. Everybody gets full of their fall asleep, and they may have to be asking them hard questions, but, um, but yeah, you all bring it down, and the residents of the Sixth Ward is a question. Thank you all so much for your time.
Alderman, I wanna clear this up. City Department did not have homicide. We actually.
Hello, hello, we get out of this Latin, we clean, we get.
I just didn't want that to be put out there.
Okay.
There is no homicide, it was not a homicide, there was serial homicide.
Okay, thank you.
I stand ready for the meeting.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. I'd just like to touch on something really passionate to me, which, uh, we have a important. This is that we have a one month. So I always hear in our meetings about, you know, comparing, um, all the, you wanna be compared to Oakwood, you wanna be compared to Foxmore, those things, and that's often what I can understand with this place. I also hear a lot of white trash comments. One thing we really need to look into is see how much those citizens actually owe the city apartment. We're talking two decades worth of money that they owe us. Some just don't. We've been holding up calls, managing housing, and so on. And those, those money that owes to the city, those money that we could use to do. Some of them, there are, that's, that's really not responsible for the city, because those departments have really not owned. Those departments we don't own, but the city does try to pay those people, though, yards are like, but, but the, uh, they try to pay. Last summer, they had an alien choice, but due to money that we don't pay, that's a lot of people. And sadly, just start, that's just, that's why I'm right there. That's always money, we cannot even have competitive salaries for our, that, that cut the grass. Because everybody wants Homewood, Oakwood, Foxmore paid. We, we can't afford to pay them, so Homewood, Oakwood, and Foxmore paid. If we can get those lines that businesses owe us for two decades, we can be like Homewood, Oakwood, and Foxmore. When we talk about transparency, please talk about these two whole numbers, not for the past one or two years, for the past decade. And maybe just stop and figure out what we can do with some other things. So, please be patient with our citizens, we can't cut those yards. I also told my residents too, if I'm staying next to two vacant houses, when I cut my yard down first, when some start, I'm starting to grab some others. Let's help out with that, we have, nobody is saying it's something. So again, just be mindful of those things. As far as Black History Month, the mind has that we all are here, right? Because somebody loves us, and someone looks up to us, no matter who we are. Okay, you all, bring it up.
All right, well, I will go by the last one. I love the layout of this agenda. Now, it, you know, it's just my opinion. This gives us an opportunity to talk. It gives us, um, the public to talk first, gives the aldermen an opportunity, and then we can hear everyone's standpoint and, and views. There's a lot of, um, questions, we are working together. You know, Black History Month is very important. And it is working together. And as an alderman mentioned, what one Caucasian had said. Well, I am one Caucasian, and I am an elective official in a predominantly African-American community, and I am so proud of that, because it shows that we are working together. I am grateful to each and every one of my residents. I am grateful for each and one of you. So, as alderman, um, as alderwoman, um, I, Smith said, working together. We are not trustees, we are aldermen. So when we, when we hear about the trustees, it's a different role versus an alderman. It's a different role versus a town, versus a city, versus homeroom, home run, home to roll, versus not. So there are so much difference between South Highland, Homewood, Harvey, Gaiman City, Dalton, Markham. There is a difference, but there is all one common denominator. We get a bucket by the residents. Now, I, I find it very, very disheartening. Time after time, when we come up here, we're saying, well, our questions not are asked. I'm pursuing this. Oh, I don't think that can happen. And yet, nobody calls me and asks me. The aldermen, alderpersons here. I hear from one of you, and I reach out to one of you. But we cannot meet when three or more of elective officials meet. It's a violation of the open meeting act. So there are certain bylaws. But again, if you want, call me, call me, seven zero eight five nine six seven four seven eight. Thank you. Have a great day. Okay, oh, now we're gonna go into a recess. And this gives everyone an opportunity to talk to the elective officials, and then we'll recall the meeting. So a five minutes, a five-minute recess, so if you have questions. Um, if you have questions to ask us, we'll be around. Thank you. Five-minute recess.
Alderman Keys? Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Chapman?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Drew?
Yes.
Motion carried, and that's ordinance three four eight eight.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, ordinance regarding hotel management. This ordinance prohibits rental hotels by an hour of the same room or more than needs without license. Requires cooperation with Harvey Police Department and the Coast Guard's custody to violation. Chair with the same motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by third second by second. That's for please.
I'm trying to generate money if it's not room to somebody for more than fourteen days. You gotta get a license for the same.
Alderman Chapman?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Druitzky?
Yes.
Motion carried, and that's ordinance three four eight eight, three four eight eight.
Thank you very much. Next item is a resolution requesting community development block grant funds from good God legal, the fiscal year 2024, invest in program. This resolution requests CBG funds to assist with funding for the city's iron hydrant replacement project. Chair with the same motion to approve.
Motion go through second.
Motion by third, by last first. That's for please call it off.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Druitzky?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Chapman?
Yes.
Alderman Randall out?
Yes.
Motion carried, and that's resolution three zero seven zero. Resolution three zero seven zero.
Thank you. Next item is a resolution approving the Hawk White and Injunctive Agreement between the New Metro and Days Harley Hill Mobile Transportation Center. Chair with the same motion to approve the contractual agreement between Metro Days and Harley Hill, the destruction of the New York Mobile Transportation Center.
Point of order, Ken.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is on, uh, point of order?
Point of order.
Point of order.
I'm asking a motion to refer this to the economic committee?
That's out of order, it's not a point of order. Our point of order is to, um, be kind of business here before, this is not.
I have a motion to refer this to the economic committee?
That's right.
Is there a second? Uh, there's a motion by the second, second by who?
By the fourth.
Fourth of order.
Thank you.
Please call.
Alderman Druitzky?
No.
Alderman Chapman? Alderman Chapman? For my motion. To refer us to the economic committee?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
No.
Alderman Keys?
Yes.
Alderman Randall out?
No.
Alderman Rogers?
No.
Lord.
Motion to approve. Motion by fifth.
Second.
Second by third. Third.
Just beat it right through.
I'm sorry, how's everybody?
Second by third. That's for please call it off.
Alderman Rogers?
No.
Alderman Randall out?
This is motion to approve.
Alderman Randall, I really would drop into a, uh, the sixth ward alderman person said yes, and he said that myself, could you re-say that?
Would you like to, would you call your, uh?
I'd like to, I wish to drop my phone.
Yeah, 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 it's okay.
I just wanna have a proper call number. Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Randall out?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Druitzky?
Yes.
Alderman Chapman? We would have been given, if we had more knowledge, to refer to the economic development committee, so this time I'm saying no. Alderman Key?
Thank you.
Motion carried, and the resolution three zero seven one, the resolution three zero seven one.
Thank you very much. We decide one agenda, it's like a decision, it's not litigation, it's jury, and the motion to, to have a decision.
Second.
Motion to second. Motion, I wanna, who's motion by? Right, I heard the second, but I didn't hear the actual motion. Motion by the fifth, second by the second. Alderman Davis by the second. Aye?
Aye.
We suppose, here, uh, if we stand, uh, with the second decision, it's eight o'clock.